Notice with the respective clerks of the city of Lambertville, borough of Stockton and township of West Amwell. And advertised in the Hunterdon County Democrat and Trenton Times newspaper. Please join me for the flag.
States of America, two, three republics for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jennifer Bach, here.
Martha Dennis.
Here.
Gina Bichetti.
Here.
Brian P. Kevin Kovalski. Aaron O'Weary. Michael Schraub.
Here.
Ronnie Todd Moreno.
Here.
Jim Gallagher.
All right, we have a smaller group, but um, we have Gina on the phone. Anybody who's interested in knowing that and Kevin will be joining us a little late. So if we can start with the PTO and LAF updates.
Hello.
It's been a little bit since we've been here, sorry.
You've been busy.
Huh?
You've been busy.
Yeah, yes, we have. I'm, I hope you guys have all had a wonderful summer. Um, as summer winds down, the PTO has been busy working alongside administration and volunteers to welcome students, staff and families back to school. Last week, we provided T-shirts and popsicles for kindergarten camp, Kona Ice for ninth grade orientation and popsicles for pre-K orientation today. Um, this week, we're hosting our Break the Ice Social with Kona Ice for grades one through four. And our middle school ice cream social where Kona Ice will be serving novelty ice creams. And School of Rock will also be there, which is really exciting. Thank you. Um, I'm really excited about these events because they are traditions from the former West Amwell PTO and Lambertville PTA um, that we were able to continue in the new building. So that's pretty cool. We've also been supporting our staff. Last week, we partnered with um, Ms. Jane Ellen um, to provide lunch for new teachers and tomorrow we will provide a welcome back lunch for all district staff here at the high school. And then next week, we're organizing our back to school barbecue for grades nine through 12. Thanks to a generous donation from Shop Right, we'll be serving hamburgers, hot dogs and veggie burgers. And the volunteer signups went out on Parent Square and they're posted on our Facebook page. So if anybody would like to volunteer, we're always welcoming volunteers. Um, it's also a good way for parents of the younger kids to come up here. This building is kind of intimidating for people. Like I didn't know how to get in it my first time. So just familiarizing yourself with surroundings, meeting staff, it's, it's a good way to like a good segue. Um, our first PTO meeting will be Monday, September 8th at 7:00 PM in the South Elementary Media Center. All meeting dates are posted on Membership Toolkit Calendar. Um, looking ahead, our district wide back to school event will be an outdoor movie night at, on Ely Field, which is really, really exciting. I've been wanting to do that for a long time. We'll be showing the Sandlot, gates open at 6:30 and the movie begins promptly at seven. This is not a drop off event. Please do not leave your children. Um, admission is $25 per family and it includes popcorn. Um, there will be candy and drinks available for purchase. Registration is open on Membership Toolkit. And volunteer signups for that event are also available on our Facebook page and they went out on Parent Square. This movie night will take place, will take the place of our September Kids Night Out. And the first drop off Kids Night Out will be Friday, October 3rd. And all of those dates are also posted on our Membership Toolkit Calendar. Um, we are also excited to announce that Beyond the Bell is back for the fall semester. We have 11 confirmed clubs so far, including Jiu-Jitsu, bead making, cooking club, garden club. And there's, there's a bunch more. We're still looking to expand. So if any community members or staff are interested in leading a club, we'd love to hear from you. And then finally, um, the PTO is thrilled to partner with the Lambertville Nature Explorers to revitalize our school's community garden. Jen Gifford and Gillian Vavoli, parents of South um, elementary students have already made incredible progress clearing the space. And then we had um, Jason Vavrence come from Riverbend landscaping with his crew today and they cleaned the whole thing out. It was, the transformation is incredible. It's, it looks really, really awesome. Um, and then tomorrow, Jen and I are going to go in and lay the landscaping fabric. The wood chips are being delivered on Wednesday. And if anyone wants to come and help haul wood chips, we're happy to have you. Um, and we look forward to working with the district and working with the green team to kind of maximize the garden's educational impact. Cause there's, there's a lot of stuff we can do with it. We can have a lot of community events and a lot of wonderful things we can do. And that's all I got. I'm still not better.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Good evening. Uh, I'm Kate with the LAF. Um, first of all, I just want to congratulate Jess and the PTA? Oh, PTO, um, they've done a lot of work. They have a ton of events. Um, and I had the opportunity to see the little preschoolers enjoy their ice pops today and they were so happy. Um, they loved it. So you guys are doing really great stuff. Um, like the PTO, we've been busy this summer. We um, had the opportunity to receive some new grants that we're looking at. Um, so we're really looking forward to supporting the district in the year ahead. Um, we have our first fundraiser, which is Golf Day, our annual Golf Day. We got our date back, which is the first October, first Monday in October, October 6th. Um, and I'm pleased to report we got our first sponsorship today. So um, we're starting to raise some funds and we are hopeful that the teachers will come up with some really nice new programming that we can support this year. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is correspondence. And as per board practice, the correspondence is posted to the agenda um, for this, tonight's meeting for public review. I need to um, have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from last.
So.
This is a voice, voice vote, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now we have a presentation on our Gifted and Talented Review.
Yeah, so uh, Danielle Lennon will be presenting tonight an update. Just for some background, obviously we had um, our GNT program reviewed uh, by an outside consultant as part of the review of our programming. And then with that, they made recommendations. So last year, Danielle worked with um, a parent group and a variety of folks for input. And then we'll be presenting tonight where things are and where things are going with the GNT moving forward.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and the community. I just want to say a special thanks to all the parents that committed um, many hours last winter and spring to our program. Um, is a parent advisory group. So the parent advisory group came out of the suggestions when we did the PCG Gifted and Talented Program Overview. So if you remember when they presented, I think it was um, two years ago in April and May, one of the suggestions was to involve the key stakeholders in the decision-making. And so we met um, beginning, I think it was the first week in February and we probably met once to twice a month um, for the rest, the remainder of the school year, we finished by the end of April so that we could share with the curriculum committee and then do some work over the summer. So as a result of the work with the advisory group, um, we put together a revised and updated Gifted and Talented Program. And the first thing many of you will notice is that um, it has a new name. So we completely rebranded it in the sense that we used to call it enrichment. Um, and enrichment is something that we provide for all students. So we often talk about enrichment activities. Gifted and Talented um, has very specific criteria, identification and programming. And so um, many of the parents on the committee learned a lot about the different, our, our board policy, what other districts do. Um, we spent a lot of time doing some research and getting an overview about what gifted and talented is. And um, just so everybody knows, there is legislation and a regulation um, that says that all students K-12 in the state of New Jersey um, need to be um, identified and then provide programming for. In many districts, it's very different. Um, and the state says you must do this, but they don't tell you how to do it or what it looks like. So in many ways, that's very, very good because we can design programs based on the needs of our students. And because we're so small, we can take it even one step further and design programming by grade, by student clusters. Um, so it's a wonderful opportunity. So I'm just going to give you a brief overview of what um, the committee and PCG and where are we moving to next year? There will also be a phase two where we'll put some things into place um, in 26, 27. Um, and I'll provide updates over the year as we get closer to any other new programming or new identification. Again, you're always welcome, parents, um, community members to reach out to me by email if you have any questions. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. So this was the gifted and talented vision that the um, parent advisory committee came up with and developed. We spent a lot of time wordsmithing, as you can imagine. But basically what we wanted to get across is that our program identifies and cultivates the exceptional talents of gifted learners. So through this um, vision, we strive to foster curiosity, perseverance and lifelong learning for a range of creative opportunities. I will tell you that all of those words were chosen very, very carefully. We originally had about 13 bullet points. We all reevaluated, pivoted and say, hey, let's keep it simple. Let's let this vision guide us. And through those two bullets and those very, very specific words, we provided um, an overview for a program that's really going to meet the needs of our students. So gifted and talented, as I said, is a little different than enrichment. Um, the lessons and activities are designed to challenge the advanced learning needs of GNT students at their level and pace. The emphasis is on intellectual challenge, creativity and cognitive growth. So the most important thing and something we will, as I said, be adopting in 26, 27 is we are going to extend our gifted and talented beyond the intellectual challenges. So beyond the academics. Um, and this aligns very much with our district goals in the sense that we're going to look at how are students coming to us and what kind of gifted and advanced learning needs do they have in the arts? So we will developing a gifted and talented art program. We'll be developing a gifted and talented music program. We also, there's a component that was recommended us through PCG, which is a leadership component. Um, so we want to be able to offer, offer those opportunities to our students who, you know, not necessarily are gifted in math or reading or writing, but they have that creativity or that leadership. Um, and so those are things that will be coming in the upcoming years. So this is a really important slide for many families. And I remember my many years um, as a gifted and talented teacher. And when I was supervising and had a lot of parent meetings about what gifted and talented is. So it's very, very interesting when you start to look at the different styles. So if you look at the behavior characteristics. So what is the learning style for an academically strong student, right? Typically, we say those are the students that do school well. Um, they learn quickly and easily with instruction. Many of us can automatically picture maybe one of our own children. Or maybe we have a family member that learns and can easily adapt to instruction. A gifted and talented student may need a little bit more instruction and they're often self-taught. So they have a hobby or they have an interest. They um, that they might perseverate on. I only, one of my students, I'll never forget. She only wanted to write, read and talk about cats, right? So the teacher kept saying, well, where is she gifted? How come she's coming to you as gifted and talented? Well, she was highly motivated to learn about cats and research about cats. It's just one simple example. But oftentimes, the other thing is to think about their thinking style. That's why when we will talk about programming and even though the state says we have to identify and provide resources and programming for K-2 students, our case two students, our five and six-year-olds are still developing their own thinking. So to think that they're divergent thinkers, oftentimes that, that hasn't even begun to be tapped into. So that's why I oftentimes really refer to families to look at these slides. How do they complete tasks? Does it take them a really, really long time? Because they're thinking about something else? Or do they complete it quickly? And where does that fall in this behavior? Um, so just some things, I'm not going to go over them all, but I want to draw your attention to the difference between high achieving versus gifted and talented. So the identification process is very similar to how we would identify students in any type of programming. We use a universal screening and multiple measures. It is more than one just data point. So it is more than just the NJSLA or it is more than just an I-ready score. It is more than just parent or teacher feedback. We have to take all of those things into um, consideration as we are looking at where students are. Sometimes student work samples won't do justice to the creative thinking or building or constructing if we're only looking at a writing sample. So that's why we look at multiple measures so we can get a clear portfolio or picture of what the child looks like. And then we have a GNT committee in the school, very similar to we have an MTSS team that will determine eligibility. So by school level, and again, this is a little bit what I was talking about with the state's requirements. In our elementary school at South Elementary, there are pullout sessions during the accelerate. There's also in-class enrichment or support with the GNT teacher. And then some of the things that they would be doing are project-based learning, STEM and science challenges, math extension projects, book clubs and creative writing. So you can see that this provides the flexibility for the teacher that if she has seven students in a, in her third grade GNT accelerate, she's going to design something that they're interested in. So if they all have an interest in math, maybe they're going to be doing a math extension project that's going to lead to building a town that has, you know, lots of different moving parts. So that's why we have the flexibility. So in middle school, they will have pullout sessions also during accelerate in the STEM lab, or should say the STEAM lab. Um, and this is something new because last year we weren't able to um, maximize the flex time for our gifted and talented students in middle school. So we're really excited about that as well as some push-in and in-class enrichment. And then we have, those are some of the examples. Again, additional STEM activities, opportunities for debate and in ELA and then research projects. So again, we're looking at ways that we can meet the needs of the students in order to provide an enriched and an accelerated um, class for them. And then in high school, this is very typical in most high schools, nine to 12 honors AP dual enrollment is directly aligned with um, gifted and talented. There could be an opportunity for a gifted um, or an independent study. This would be something like our Performing Arts Academy where their final year is a capstone. Um, and then mentorships. So as we look at all of the different things that we provide in our very inclusive, small community, we see that we're doing a lot for students. And sometimes we don't necessarily realize that because we never put it in a chart like this. Or we never say, all right, how do our pieces go together? Um, but I did want to show you, we do do a lot to meet the needs of our advanced level learners. So parent communication, this is also a huge part of what we talked about for in our parent advisory group. So what will that look like? Cause parents often ask their eight-year-old or 11 or 13-year-old, oh, so what did you do in accelerate? Well, that could have been for some kids, the very first 40 minutes of the day or the time right before or after lunch. Well, a whole lot's happened by the time they get home and maybe they sit down to dinner or having a conversation in a car ride. So this gives the teacher the opportunity to share quarterly updates, whether that's a newsletter or um, different types of ways that parents can know what they're doing. And then parent teacher conferences, parents are welcome to meet with the gifted and talented teacher during those conference times that we're going to have in elementary and middle school. And this slide goes over the criteria. And again, what we've done with this, this is what I was referring to when I was using a little edgy speak earlier about multiple measures. So we look at these assessments and these data points to say, what can we do? What does this look like for this child? So the COGAT, which we've given here in South Hunterdon for many years, um, we actually are now just giving it in second grade and then we'll give it again in sixth grade. So by second grade, most of the research says that the seven-year-old in the spring, which is typically when we give it at the end of February or in March, though at that point in time, students have mastered a lot of the developmental skills they need to get a clear understanding of what their cognitive ability is. So that's a little different than their academic ability. It is um, they're very different kinds of assessments. Um, their problem solving, their thinking, um, their spatial relations. And so we give that assessment to get a clear understanding. It's normed. It's given in many districts um, to identify what the um, excuse me, the cognitive ability is of a second grader and then a sixth grader. We're also using the I-ready diagnostic assessment. Um, and I've had several conversations with families in the middle school to say, oh, well, the kids didn't really take it seriously and they didn't really know it was going to count. Well, guess what it does? And so we will make sure that we clearly communicate to students to say, hey, look, this is why we take this seriously because what we look at when we look at the I-ready diagnostic, as some of you may remember when I reported out about um, the student data, it come in um, the different levels or performance bands are mid or at grade level, above grade level, two grade levels below, one grade level below or three grade levels below. So when we're looking at a gifted and talented child and they're being given the diagnostic in either the fall, winter or spring, we're looking at students who are coming in at grade level or above grade level. Um, if a student is typically scoring below grade level, um, that may be an indicator that there's a gap in something and maybe they're not ready for um, gifted and talented at second grade, let's say. Um, but maybe that's why we give them also the opportunity in sixth grade to have everybody reassessed. The DIBELS is a maze assessment. It's comprehension. So again, we're getting another piece of what that student can do. We have teacher and student rubrics of gifted behaviors in a checklist. Some of the teachers um, maybe have been familiar or parents with the Rensselaer Scales. They were extremely extensive and oftentimes didn't give us the information we need. Um, and then parent-student um, input. So if a parent has specific um, notices or things they would like to share, that um, we will provide that opportunity so that they can go ahead and prepare that. And then all of these will fall into a point system that we then look at saying, okay, if a student scored within this range, then they can be considered for gifted and talented. And so here's the services information. So again, the grade intervals we, we assess in grade second, in second grade as well as again, in sixth grade. Um, so the screening assessment is the COGAT. There's a little bit of description about what the assessment is. There's classroom teacher input and checklist and recommendations. And then there's review of student achievement data. This all goes um, before a gifted and talented committee. Very similar to our data team meetings where, and it may take place at a data team meeting because that's where we're looking at all of the data. And then the teachers, the principal, um, myself are all included in that decision-making process. And then information is sent home to the families um, of the results. The current, the COGAT scores or the COGAT um, scores that the students took, second grade students took last year have not gone out yet. They will be going out the second week in September and they will be going out with a letter. Um, and then the gifted and talented accelerated classes will start the first week in October for those students that are identified in grades three and four. Any student in um, grades five, six, seven or eight that was previously in gifted and talented um, or our enrichment program will continue. And they will meet during the accelerate class, as I said, um, with the gifted and talented teacher. At the middle school and high school, the gifted and talented teacher is also the STEM teacher. So that provides a lot of opportunities for that messy learning and hands-on activities. Um, and those teachers have been working um, also with the high school to provide vertical articulation. So the teachers are meeting to say, okay, so I'm doing coding with our third graders. What does it look like when they come to fifth grade? When we're also talking about coding. So that's been a um, process that they've been working on since the spring and over the summer. And that is um, an overview. I also wanted to point your attention out. Um, part of the recommendation from the parents and PCG as well as the state is requirement is to have a website. So you will find the gifted and talented website on our school district website. And there you can see an overview of the vision. You can see, I will upload this presentation tomorrow. Um, there's, there's an F, there's some FAQs. There's also a gifted and talented guide. Um, and that really is just a PDF of some questions. Um, and everything that's in this slide with a little more detail. Um, so you're welcome to take a look at that. And then certainly email me if you have additional questions. Again, know that this is an evolving process. We're going to roll this out and implement it this year with the idea, knowing that we will probably bring the advisory group together in the spring to say, okay, so now what's our next step? How are our students' needs being met? What do we need to do to further grow and strengthen this program?
Any questions on the board?
Channel the multiple measures, are they weighted equally or is there a different weighting?
No, there's not. Nope, nope, they're not weighted equally. And that will be the rubric that we will share with families in the spring when we go through, because last year we were putting the, the pieces together. And so we use, so any student we felt as we rolled into this, the updated program that was currently in gifted and talented, stayed in gifted and talented. So our second graders are really the new group, the new cohort. And so um, with coming together with the advisory group and the um, the team, we determined that these were the measures. So there'll be a rubric, as I said. So you know, the COGAT will weigh heavier than um, maybe the DIBELS, right? Because that's just a reading comprehension piece, but we want to know what that is. COGAT will probably weigh the heaviest because that is the cognitive ability. That's given us a real insight on where the student is as a thinker.
And will you also take, cause some of your special needs kids are going to have fairly detailed educational assessments that may include conversion of an IQ score. Will you take that into consideration as well if they've scored uh, through that testing?
Well, yes, we will take that into consideration in terms of stu-, uh, in terms of teacher input. But they will, in terms of trying to create rubrics that align, they would need to be part of the, have one of those assessments. But when they take any one of those assessments, as all of our special education students do, they take it with all the accommodations and modifications. So all of our students take the COGAT, no matter what their programming is. All of the students take I-ready, no matter what their programming is within whatever they're based on their IEP needs. So yes, it's all taken into consideration and then we look at all of those pieces. And then if we still say, oh, wait, you know, we're looking at you know, Woodcock Johnson score, something like that. It doesn't really match this. Hmm, we need to do some further research.
For the um, I-ready assessments, I know we've gotten them a few times. Um, that, that, how do we, that's not point in time, I-ready? Or is it only looking at the?
The diagnostic, yeah.
No, but like, do we do it a few times in, right?
Mm-hmm.
So when we're um, when it's part of the GNT, are we looking at it over time or just one?
Um, we will prob-, we will look at, we'll prob-, most likely, we will look at the spring diagnostic. Because as we saw when I did the student data report um, June, the growth was huge, right? So it only is going to benefit the student. And then that is to, I mean, that is to say, everything is, you know, we look at, that's why we take so many multiple measures. Because if they're one grade level below in I-ready, but they have a COGAT score of 135, you know, we, we're like, well, wait a minute. So let's, let's know. And then what does the teacher see? What is the, what is the STEM teacher see? What is the art teacher see? So you know, that's why we have the conversation with the teacher input. Um, I truly believe that you, there's no, there's no profile of a gifted student that is the same for every student.
Um, and then last question, I saw that we had um, advanced, possible advanced math class at the middle school level. Um, what, what does that look like? Is that like, maybe like a seventh grader jumping into algebra, something like that?
So it's the algebra one for eighth grade currently as well. So it's the Algebra I for eighth grade currently as well.
Okay, if you had younger students who seem like they would benefit, would they be able to do algebra? Since everybody's?
If they meet the Algebra I placement criteria. So that is something else that we, um, took into consideration when looking at pre-algebra and Algebra I placement criteria. I did have several questions from families about, you know, my child's not in pre-algebra. How are they gonna get to BC calculus? And I said, you know what? We never, if a student says, I wanna do this and they demonstrate that they can with a variety of assessments and placement, then we certainly will give them the opportunity. I truly believe that nobody should be tracked as a seventh grader, especially in math.
I think sometimes there is a perception that being an academically strong student is somehow not enough if you don't meet the GNT standards. Will we have any sort of communication? Because being an academically strong student is fabulous in and of itself.
Oh, yes.
For, for parents to, just to provide a comfort level that, um, GNT is wonderful for students who put into that criteria, but simply being in, I don't even wanna say simply, but being an academically strong student is tremendous in and of itself.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why by the time students get to ninth grade, right? Everybody, the playing field is now wide open. So maybe you weren't, you didn't meet the criteria as a gifted and talented student in second or sixth grade. You, you can go on to take, you know, five APs. You can go on to be, you know, president of the student council, sit on our board of education. You, you can go on to be captain of the football team or, you know, the lead chair in, I don't know band very well, but I'm thinking the lead clarinet, okay?
Drum major.
Drum major, right? And so there are lots of opportunities and that's what I, I really truly like to share with families. And it's sometimes very hard because until you've had a high school or, or you've gone through the high school process, you don't know what gifted and talent, you know, you think that you, because they're in this gifted and talented, that they're all of a sudden not gonna be challenged or, you know, our opportunities blow open, you know, when we get to high school. And we wanna be able to celebrate all of those students. Just as we've, this summer where we've had students in the National Ed Equity reaching top goals and our AP scores and the students getting fours and fives. I mean, those are all things to be, our dual enrollment numbers that have quadrupled. So, you know, every single one of those little boxes is a check to somebody who is academically strong. I know there has been, um, there's been some type of perception that, oh, I used to go with, you know, the GNT teacher and, you know, there was some exclusivity. You know, that's why we built Accelerate, right? And this year at the elementary school, we even redesigned the schedule so that they would have more opportunity. So it's a staggered accelerate. So more students can, um, have opportunities beyond, you know, when we only had one period or they, they didn't get a chance to meet. And the GNT teacher, STEM teacher will come into the classroom to work with students because sometimes, you know, all of those measures didn't really add up. But that's not to say that student's not gonna go on to write a book or that student's not gonna go on and, you know, teach the math lesson on how to solve the fractions when they're decimals and quadruple exponents or whatever it may be. So, but I hear what you're saying.
Just hopefully to put a pin in this as well, I, it, we've talked a lot about this in curriculum. So I don't wanna get you with any of, of any further questions, but I did wanna just say how much I appreciate the process that went into crafting this because it not only is reaching for that academic excellence that we all want, but it also involved our community. And the fact that this had such a strong parent advisory group is really a great thing. I think that in this particular group, I, I was a GNT student when I was in the district. In fact, my teacher's daughter is sitting in the room right now. It, it is really important that our community be involved as resources for these children especially.
Yep, absolutely.
I also wanted to say that I appreciated, um, the way that the group looked at all of the successes of the previous enrichment program and that this is building upon that. And you made the distinction that enrichment opportunities are available to all of our students and especially those that are academically successful to say they're, they will get more advanced information and go deeper into certain subjects. So this is on, on top of that, not, not.
And that's truly, you know, that is a lens in which I have to choose all curriculum programs, right? So as we've looked at wit and wisdom and the, the masterpiece art and the books that those students read, it is really a glimpse into very rigorous, challenging, um, resources that give that gifted student or the student that has an interest in whatever this, whatever the book, the, you know, the heartbeat that the fourth graders go on to learn about how the blood travels through the body in fourth grade. And then they read Love That Dog, which is, or A Heartbeat, like, so there's so much extension and opportunities within the programs we choose so that we can meet those new. So nobody's bored, nobody's doing something over and over again. The same way we work with small group instruction in math so that students don't, you know, we don't have to do all of the problems. You all have shown us in this assessment that you're gonna go and you can do a project. These students may not, they're gonna get something different. And that's really what we wanna be able to communicate clearly with our students is that everybody gets something different. So we don't just go out for gifted and talented. We go out to maybe work with the physical therapist or we go out for gifted and talented or we go out for music or whatever it is, we go out for ESL. We go out for lots of different things because those, that's the need I have right now. And that's how it's going to be serviced. So that's why we design the schedule with Accelerate. That's why we choose the programs that we do because there's more than one way, right? And so we have to be able to say, and I have to be able to stand and support and speak to the board about, this is the best program for all seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two students in this classroom and not just these four or whatever it may be.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, great, hi. So thanks Gina Ellen, um, thank you for the great presentation. I was just hoping that maybe you could explain a little bit about why it's sixth grade, why sixth grade is the second time that the COGAT and I guess like the other kind of, um, review of student ability or however you wanna put it is, is being done. I know you talked a little bit about why second grade was chosen, but, um, I'm, I'm curious about why sixth grade is the second.
Sure. And that really, and that also came out of the parent advisory group that it should be assessed another time. Many districts don't, many districts, once you, you take the assessment or, and you're identified in second grade, that's it. But we really felt, and I feel very strongly, that all of a sudden, as we just talked about with Martha, like, things happen and opportunities are out there for students, um, as they get into middle school. So at middle school students in, in the spring of sixth grade will now have seventh and eighth grade ahead of them as well as program opportunities in high school. So we really wanna know again, what is their cognitability? What has developed in these now, you know, eleven, twelve-year-olds that we didn't see when they were seven and eight? So we wanna get another sort of check-in, just like you would go to the doctor to get a, you know, an idea of the pulse and you would get a blood test and you'd get your blood pressure and cholesterol and all those things checked that you might not have gotten checked when you were seven. We wanna get a clearer picture so that we can provide programming. Maybe we see that there is a cohort of students that have very strong math ability. So do we have enough math programs for them? Would there be an opportunity for them to double up in a math? Do we consider offering an AP stat class to ninth graders? So we wanna be able to have a clear understanding of where students are without just the NJSLA or without just I Ready, right? Cause I don't feel like they give the full picture. This is just another look at where our kids are as they approach seventh and then move into eleventh and twelfth grade. It also gives us a clear understanding of developing different types of pathways because the COGAT assesses what's called non-verbal reasoning. And it's a very different type of assessment. It's very logical thinking that we don't ever, you're not gonna get an I Ready or a reveal or wit and wisdom. And that's that piece where if you've ever done like folding paper or seven trees are this and four trees are this and how much is left? So it's that logical piece, um, that oftentimes are on graduate exams or LSATs or something like that. So where does that, if our students have that ability, what are we providing for them? So it's just another way for us to get a clearer picture on our students that would then be entering seventh grade.
And it was also, I'll just point out a recommendation from PCG when they did the overview of the program.
Got all your questions Gina? Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes, so busy time. Obviously tomorrow is our first day back for staff. So all of our staff are returning tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday for in-service as we prepare for our students coming on, uh, September 2nd after Labor Day. So it's an exciting time, just a few things that were mentioned already, but some reminders. About to break the ice in the Ice Cream Social, um, which will be happening this week. And then obviously, if you remember last year, we did, uh, the barbecue just for our seventh and ninth grade parents. But this year, now that we're a full high school only, we decided that we wanna invite all of our parents in high school. So we're really hoping that we'll get a good turnout, nine, 10, 11, 12. There will be obviously a ton of food from five to six. And then like we did last year, kids will be doing different activities and then we will have a parent program from, uh, six to seven o'clock in the auditorium and we'll be touching upon a bunch of different things. So we're hoping we get a big turnout for that. Back to school nights, which were mentioned, but they'll be coming. So I just wanted to get everything down on the calendar for, for that as well. Just for the middle school, just a few updates. Our playground equipment will be arriving this week. Um, our maintenance staff will be installing it. We're, our goal is to get it done by mid-September. Obviously there's a lot of moving parts right now and they're working on some of the other playgrounds for our preschools. Uh, and as soon as they're finished, they will get to that. We still have a few punch list items we're working through with our contractor, resolving some HVAC and humidity issues in the middle school. And we're hoping to get that resolved in the next week or so. I do wanna stress and you'll be seeing me send this out again, uh, this coming weekend. I think Friday it's going out. If parents, you know, first we're encouraging parents at the middle school to allow their kids to take the bus. But for some reason, if you need to drive and drop off in the morning or pick up, please watch this video just because it is a new school building and it kinda walks you through where buses will be going, where parents will be going, how that process is gonna work in the morning and in the afternoon. So, um, you know, we'll have plenty of folks out there next week to assist parents for the first couple of days as everyone gets used to it. But if you didn't get a chance to watch that video, please do so. Just a couple of transportation reminders and I sent this out on Friday, but I wanted to remind everyone again. So all bus information has been posted in Encourse. It's been there since Friday. As a reminder, we're asking students to be at their bus stop 10 minutes before their scheduled time in the morning, um, and remain there for 10 minutes, uh, after scheduled time. We all know in the first week or so, we gotta work through some of the challenges. And even though the routes look great in our software system, we have to adjust. So, you know, if the bus pickup time is, you know, 8:00 AM and the bus isn't there by 8:02, we're not looking for kids to say, gee, I can go home. All right, we want them to stick around for a little bit. Um, and then we'll work through some of that. We're asking for parents to give us some flexibility as we get acclimated to the routes. And then obviously if any parents have any questions about the route or the times or anything along those lines, feel free to reach out to our transportation coordinator who does a great job, Amanda Brown. Here's her email and her phone number and she'll get back to you and answer any of those questions. I did wanna provide an update on the turf field. So we talked about this at our last meeting. We've been talking about this for several months. This is a rendering of what the turf project looks like. I just wanted to remind folks, and I went through this at our last meeting, but, um, just to be transparent again, that as the design of the turf evolved in January, we did determine by our engineers that we needed to add some medicinal drainage, to manage the stormwater and the stormwater requirements. So after, over the last several months, our engineers have been working on that design. Um, and they just recently provided that to our turf vendor. And you can see from the drawing below, what they're going to be doing is literally installing a drainage system underneath the field, inside of the field. And a lot of the dirt that will be removed or as they call it spoils that were removed from the field for the turf will get put over to this area with the red X, which will become another practice area for our football program. Right now there's a drop-off there, if you're familiar with that area. Now it will be level once we remove all the dirt. So they did design that under the field so it, we don't have to increase the size of our drainage basins or things that are already existing. With that came some additional costs, so you can see what the original price was. The new drainage system, the cost to remove the fill in the topsoil from the existing field. We will actually be utilizing it on three different areas of the, of the campus. The area that I showed before for the additional practice field. We're gonna have a stockpile of topsoil over near our pole barn just for our baseball or softball fields. And then we're also gonna be utilizing some of it over on our middle school site as well. The total new cost, you can see there, um, the board was aware back in the winter that there was gonna be some additional costs for the drainage system. The board had made the decision as we build our budget for 25, 26, to put a deposit down on the field project of 500,000, using the capital reserve account to pay for that and then to finance the remaining amount. The next steps, last week, we actually submitted all the applications to DRCC and Hunter County Soil Conservation, as well as delivered a set of plans to West Anwell Township. The goal was for the project to start at the conclusion of the fall athletic season and be ready for the spring athletic season. We spent a lot of time talking about the goal and this has been a goal for the board for the last several years, really since the referendum, was now that we have middle school and high school on one campus, was to try to maximize all of our extracurricular activities from the athletic side to remain on campus the best we possibly can. As middle school parents know, right now between Hua Park and Uwe Field and other places, Flemington with, um, you know, the park up there as well, Lennepin Park, we are transporting kids all over the place and the goal is to try to keep them on campus the best we possibly can. So on the agenda tonight, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is we have two items related to the turf project. One is an updated quote that reflects the new price. And then the other is a resolution authorizing, um, Phoenix, which is our financial advisor, to put out an RFP for financing the project. So in other words, the remaining balance, we put it out there to see what kinda interest rates we're going to be getting. Why are we financing this project? Because it allows us some flexibility with our capital reserve account to focus on some other things and specifically with the high school. So we're in great shape now with the elementary school, obviously with the middle school. So pre-K eight, you know, is really solid. The focus moving forward will be the high school over the next three years of different things between the academy, some other things that we're looking at. You'll see when I do our district goals, uh, in September, at the September board meeting, one of our goals is gonna be really focused on the high school experience for our students. Some of the things we wanna move towards, you know, from a facility side as well. So, um, that's the reason why the board made the decision to finance, to provide some flexibility. So I know that tax bills came out August 1st, I get that, right? So, you know, and I understand, you know, taxes and how expensive and the majority of folks's tax bills are going to the school district. I did wanna share that, and we've been talking about this, but we will have some referendum debt that will be rolling off the books. Our last payment of our old referendum debt comes in February of 2026. So taxpayers will experience referendum relief starting July 1st of 2026 as our payment where we reduced, and you can see by that number, over a million dollars. You can see up here on the chart what we were paying, 25 and 26, and then where that number goes in 26, 27, once we lose that old referendum debt. So that's something we've been talking about for three years, but it is close to happening. The way the tax cycle works, as you know, you know, from July to June, so you get your tax bill in August. So even though we're making that last payment in February, the relief won't start to occur until the next cycle in July. So I did wanna point that out. I also did wanna point out, at our last board meeting, we talked a little bit about this concept of arbitrage with the interest that we earned from, um, our referendum funds. And I know there's been some misunderstanding of that. So I felt like it was important to really clarify that and what that is and explain what it means for a school district. So basically this gives you a summary. When voters approve a referendum, the district often sells bonds to raise money for projects like construction or renovation, exactly what we did. We invested the money, right? Sometimes a district doesn't spend all the money right away. It sits in an account until the project bills come due. So obviously that money was in an investment account. As we get pay apps from the contractors based on the progress they make, we're taking money out, taking money out and paying the contractor for their progress. we're taking money out, taking money out and paying the contractor for their progress. If those referendum dollars are invested in short-term accounts, they can earn interest, which ours did. But if the interest earned is higher than the interest rate the district is paying the bondholders, that's considered arbitrage by the IRS. The IRS doesn't allow school districts or any government entity to profit this way on borrowed tax exempt money. So when the interest earned is more than the IRS permits, the extra has to be paid back to the IRS as an arbitrage rebate, which if you remember from our last meeting, the board approved the amount of five hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-five and twenty-three to be paid back to the IRS. For South Hunter specifically, we earned two million, eight hundred and forty-one, six hundred and twenty-two, twenty-six thousand and eleven cents in interest, but we were only allowed to keep the two million, two sixty-eight, four ninety, eighty-eight. The remaining five seventy-three, one thirty-five, twenty-three was paid to the IRS. The reason for that is the rate of return on the interest account that we invested the referendum funding was four point five percent. The interest rate on the bonds that we got was three point eight two percent. So we earned more interest because of that four point five compared to the bond at three point eight two. So that is how that calculation is done. I know there was misconceptions that, you know, there was misuse of the referendum funding, therefore we were being fined by the IRS. That is not accurate, so hopefully this will provide clarification on how arbitrage works and the reason why we were paying federal government five hundred and seventy-three thousand. So West Amwell, next steps. I just wanted to share a few other updates. So on our finance agenda tonight, you will see a contract for our commercial broker, Cushman Wakefield. So we have entered into agreement to sell the property. You will also see ten X on the agenda for our finance. That is the company that's handling the auction for the property. Under the contract portion of the agenda, the contract has not been included because the contract actually is being held in Peter's office because it actually has the reserve price for the property, which we want to keep confidential at this point. Just as a reminder, because it's an online auction, the district and the board sets a reserve price that's confidential. What that does is it protects the board of having to accept an offer that is too low. So there's a reserve price, the number is there, we know what it is. Obviously, the auction company knows what it is. If anything comes below that reserve price, the board does have the right to honor that and accept that, but it also has the right to turn it down. If a bidder bids the reserve price or higher, the board must accept the offer. All right, right now, the property is live, so if you click on this link, you will see the property is up on the auction site. It's been up since last Thursday. And the actual auction is right now tentatively scheduled for Monday, October 6th through Wednesday, October 8th. So what happened is it will go live auction, it's online, like similar to like eBay, which is quite interesting to me. And we'll be able to see from the board's perspective, the bids that come in and what they are. Regardless of what they are, we have to go through the three days. So even let's say if a bid came in the first day and it meant the reserve price, we can't shut the auction down and accept it. We have to go all the way through through Wednesday. And then from there, depending upon how things play out, the property is being sold as is. All the buyers that are potentially interested know that their job is to do all this research on their own and based on what our commercial broker provides then before the actual auction date on October 6th and then bid accordingly based on having that information upfront. Now, another development, just so you're aware, as we did receive a call two weeks ago from Hunter County with possible interest in purchasing the property. They have decided to investigate the water issues on their own before making an offer on the property. Two things that they had mentioned to me on the phone about possible interest, one was a possible senior recreation center that they were looking and have interest in. The other was the possibility of a library. So I guess right now, where they're using for their South County Library is a rental facility and there is always a possibility of moving it to a new location. But they are aware of some of the water issues that we've discussed. So they wanted to investigate that further before they move forward with a formal offer. Now, speaking of water, I know this is tough to see, but I'll be sending this out. So as you know, we've been dealing with the one-four dioxide issues that are related to Lehigh Power Fluid, which is right next door. The latest round of testing, which I know it's tough to see, but it is here for us. You will notice when there was testing done on two-twenty, twenty-five and five-fifteen, twenty-five, the numbers came in below the recommended, which is point three-three. But unfortunately, when testing was done on July 31st, it came in at point eight-five-six, which is above the recommended level. So and then there's some other issues with some neighbors around who had the same situation. So we actually met with Lehigh back on June 20th and then again today, actually this morning. Both sides had legal representation. The meeting also included their licensed site remediation professional or their LSRP that they had to hire as per the DEP. They shared at the meeting that they have a proposed groundwater treatment solution that include the use of amber sorb. So I have a link there, it's made through DuPont. The the goal is for it to collect the actual molecule molecules of one-four dioxide. So if you want to click on the link and take a look at it a little bit further. They are waiting on a quote for the equipment and the installation, which they hope to have by the 29th this week. From what we're being told, the installation, based on the infrastructure they set up, could take a day or two to actually do. Until the remediation is complete, they will continue to provide bottled water to whoever owns the site. And then the big point of conversation is we're really working with their legal representation to try to memorialize what we talked about today because that is really important to obviously Hunter County, who may have interest in the property or any buyers for the public auction. Because the questions that they are going to have is what's the remediation, who's responsible and what is going to happen? So those are all things that we're working towards. And we're going to have further conversations this evening in executive session with our board attorney and some other folks as far as that process. But I just wanted to be transparent so you know where things are in that process. Any questions from the board on anything, I presume?
That water treatment is on our well at the West Amwell Building on our water, not, or is that on their water?
It would be on their well and nothing on our property.
So if they are, but I don't, I don't, if they're the ones adding to that, whatever, dioxide.
Amber sorb, yeah.
Yeah. Does this solution also help them not do that anymore? Because we're getting a fix, but is it still going out from them? Like, are they going to be?
It's literally, so what will happen is it will literally bring it to the surface, filter it out, put the water back into the ground. So.
So it will.
Moving it would not just for us, but for any surrounding, yes, it would remove it.
So that amber sorb is on, is in their property?
It's in their, no, and they're, they have a similar to our well room, even at the new middle school. They have a similar on their site, so it would go in.
I thought you were saying that they were going to come to West Amwell Building and remediate.
The goal would be zip, and again, I just want to be fully transparent. Because they're right now, we're kind of like the test case for a small water source such as this. They don't know a hundred percent. This is what's being recommended. The amount of amber sorb and how much is utilized, I think is going to be kind of give and take as they see how it goes. But there's no absolute yet because this is not a new for everyone. But at least the positive is we're closer to a remediation solution than we were when we met June 20th.
And just since we did receive the correspondence on the turf, could you talk a little bit more about the product for the turf and the plastics?
Yeah, so if you're familiar, you know, I'm sure everyone has kids that may have played on a turf field at one time. One of the major issues that's come up with turf fields is the little rubberized pebbles that's inside the turf. Our turf will not have that product, so we are going what's called a pivot turf. We're probably going to be one of the first school districts in the state of New Jersey that will have it. It does not contain any of those rubber fibers. So it's a new type of turf that doesn't have any of the rubber fibers, which was a concern with runoff and going off the field and getting on kids' legs and everything else. That will not be in this turf that we are putting on our field.
And Tony, on the turf and the cost, we didn't have the turf, we were just going to still have the cost of maintaining the field.
Yeah.
That didn't get, there's a little bit of, it's not a complete trade-off, but that would have been an ongoing cost for however many years you have grass on the field.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we did look at that.
Yeah.
That that in addition to the fact that we had, we have another building on campus that we would have to put a field on anyway. So that we are mitigating costs.
Absolutely.
Several ways that.
Yeah, the other plan also had a cost to sit.
Yeah, we have, we have to point out that the other plan that only got one field, that only one team could play on was going to cost one point eight two million.
That's right.
With a little reserve practice field, this allows every team to play on with the reserve practice field for a lot less because that one point eight to two million could have also expanded bigger.
That was three years ago.
That was three years ago, so guaranteed that that was probably up to two-two now. So it's a lot of savings plus every team can use it, which is obviously a lot more fair to all the students. Because it was only a matter of time before that field hockey field looked like it did last year.
So field hockey and soccer and football are all in the same season. So how could we talk a little bit about, because I know that it'll be available to you.
So on a practice side, Jason will work it out where there's a rotation each and every day where teams will split the half. So you know, like you might have field hockey on one end and girl's soccer on the other or boy's soccer. And then football would, you know, rotate in probably once a week. And then for games, because our football games are typically on Friday nights and we only have four home games, it opens up all kinds of possibilities for games after school, games at night, multiple games where it could be a four o'clock game and seven o'clock game, depending upon how we want to do it. So you know, I know in conversations with Jason, we would make sure that it's equitable so all of our sports get access an equal amount of time. And then obviously, for the spring, we'd be looking to utilize it for middle school girl softball. And then our varsity softball team would have the new field, but it also provides us a backup plan. As we know, sometimes with weather, if we do have inclement weather, we oftentimes will try to move games to Diamond Nation and utilize their turf to pay for it. Which we wouldn't have to do that, we could just slide varsity down to.
Oh, varsity.
Yeah, so it gives us some flexibility there.
And I I had a conversation with the the field hockey mom earlier this month. And one of the things that she was saying is that if there's, if there's senior night, like that can actually be made special and it can be a senior night instead of field hockey this year. And in years past, the senior games have had to be during the day and it hasn't brought as much of the community out, so we'll have the opportunity.
Yeah, for all of our sports, all of our senior nights will be on the turf.
I also wanted to express appreciation for our grounds staff and how how they stepped up and really tried to limit the costs whenever possible.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of the grading and the the foil moving we're doing in-house and that's greatly appreciated.
Anyway, that mentioned on the slide about the using the irrigation to run in-house.
No, not.
Benefit also.
Yeah, so we now have irrigation on the field hockey field, the outfield and the baseball field.
Once the turf field goes in.
Yeah, well, we're using, we're using it now, but it gives us more water source.
Yeah.
Because right now, this tank that we have can only do so much where if we take a field off it, it allows a lot more flexibility for the other grass areas to get additional watering, including the outfield of the new girl softball. Gina, question?
I have a question about the arbitrage thing. So on the the arbitrage piece, oh, I was, if if somebody wanted to go and like, read up on this, is it a bit like if they, you know, if you wanted to search IRS arbitrage rebate school district, you could.
Yeah, it's there. It will tell you, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question and excuse me if this was asked because the volume is kind of like going in and out a little bit for me. So, but one of the things I was curious about, and I've I've gotten some questions about it with regard to the turf field is, I think that there are some concerns about like some environmental concerns and you know, in particular with some of the PFOS contamination and microplastics that's kind of been in the news a lot. And so I was just wondering if that's something that you could speak to at all with regard to the use of turf?
Yeah, so just the fact that we are using a pivot turf that doesn't have the granules of rubber inside, which has caused some concerns about PFOS because besides getting on kids, you know, when they slide on it, but more runoff when there's heavy rain and then they it runs off the field and then can get in water systems and things along those lines. That is something that we considered. And there's this product that now come out, like I had mentioned before, where I don't think there's any other schools in New Jersey right now who have utilized it as of yet called pivot turf that does not contain any of those materials. So I think that's a great step in the right direction as far as, you know, dealing with the issues of PFAS.
Okay, there are no further questions. We'll enter the first period of public comment. So if members of the public would like to address the board and come to the podium, please state your name and your municipality. And we ask that you keep your questions or comments to thirty minutes.
Hi, I'm Joan Vanderveen from three forty-six Rock Road East. When I went to the tour of the junior high, I'm sorry, the middle school, I was raised in Midwest, we call them junior highs. I got some questions from people because I posted pictures and they said, where's the playground? And I didn't know there was going to be a playground. So how soon will the playground be photographic?
Hopefully by September fifteenth latest. We're going to have the equipment, we're supposed to get it by Thursday or Friday this week. And then our maintenance team to save money rather than having the installers put it together are going to install it.
So we can go after September, middle of September?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So the turf or the turf that you're explaining for the high school is the same kind of product that you're going to use on the playground as well?
No, we're going to use more for the playground area, it's going to be more like wood chips. We're not using a rubberized material for.
Okay, so it's not, it's not rubber?
No.
Okay, good, that'll be good. All right, thank you.
Yep.
I always like to point out when students are part of a decision-making process, students were polled and they decided what playground equipment would go in at the middle school.
Correct, we gave them a list.
Not on the, the equipment, what equipment they want.
We gave them a list of about five or six, seven, eight things and what was your top three? And swing sets are still, they still love the swing set.
Hi, I'm Robin Deal from West Amwell Township. I just wanted to thank the board for your donation of the kitchen equipment and the playground equipment from West Amwell Township. As you probably are aware, we're going to spend a lot of money on Hewitt Park this year through grants and open space funds. And that certainly goes a long way to helping us revamp the entire experience. And I know a lot of the children's from our school district have been using that park and it really needed the work, so that we really appreciate that donation. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Anyone online?
We did have one online. It actually came in yesterday, so I looked at it already and it's related to our homework policy. So I'm going to read it and then I'll talk a little bit about it. And it is, let me just take you through it. It is Scott Lyon, who is in Lambertville. He said, "In recent communication, you conveyed the district's consensus on homework expectations. I noticed through most of the grades, the policy correlates to the NEA endorsed ten-minute rule where daily homework average is the ten minutes per grade level. But the high school numbers far exceeded those rules of thumb. A baseline student with five college prep classes could spend roughly three hours per night and an ambitious ambitious student with one to two AP classes could be spending four to six hours per night on average. That student might start homework at four PM and take a break for dinner at six PM, then return to homework at seven and study till nine, 10 or 11. Is this really what the district's leaders recommend? I believe it's as far beyond a healthy expectation. They want to understand how they arrived at these numbers and why they think a typical smart high school student should have no time for anything but coursework." So I actually started like an email back and forth with Scott just to kind of clarify based on the policy. So just a few things I'll say about it is that the high school is a little bit different animal. And I also, you know, kind of went back and explained that I felt like his numbers were a little off as far as the expectation. Typically, when we're talking about homework, we're talking about probably five core areas, right? Your English, math, science, social studies and world language. You're not necessarily going to see a lot of homework in your elective areas, you're not necessarily going to see homework in PE. So and then the high school schedule. Um, so and then the high school schedule is a little unique because even though it's an eight period schedule, only six classes meet per day. So you're not meeting all eight classes. There's three in the morning and three in the afternoon with the drop schedule. Um. I, you know, and I said this in my correspondence, I would not recommend a child taking five AP courses. Um, for a variety of different reasons. Um, keep in mind when we talk about the AP classes, they are college classes, so. AP school boards recommends that each one of those classes have an hour of homework a night. Our policy actually says fifty minutes a night. Um, so that is something that we really try to educate our students on uh that, you know. With all the other things that you're involved with, you really have to weigh like over extenuating yourself. So or extending yourself. So it's really important to have those conversations with parents and kids during the planning process. We also highly recommend to students and parents. If your child is going to take more than two AP classes, you take a study hall, which is fifty-five minutes during the school day to obviously work on homework. We also have a flex period of thirty minutes during the school day that meets every day, five days a week where students can utilize that. To complete homework as well as get extra help from teachers. Um, so I think when I did the calculation, just in your now normal college prep classes. It was somewhere if every teacher assigned twenty-five minutes, it would be a little over two hours. Um, you know, I don't necessarily think that's going to happen um all the time. Um, I think these are kind of guidelines. It was developed by teachers. It was developed with a lot of input from District Parent Council and obviously the board. And it's not set in stone, right? So it is something that we'll be evaluating throughout the year and eventually collecting parent input on. Um, and then if we need to make tweaks, we will. Uh, we don't want students to be overwhelmed. We've talked about how some reason the guidelines don't meet students' needs, that we want parents at the elementary level. You know, to be reaching out to teachers. We want students at the middle school level to start advocating for themselves. Along with maybe some parental support and definitely at the high school, we want students to advocate for themselves. And then we can work around that accordingly. So um, I don't, you know, I don't expect students to be doing four to six hours of homework each night. That's not what the intention was. Um, and you know, I think we're going to have to see how it plays out, you know, and then we'll reevaluate it throughout the year and then make any changes that we see fit. Based on, you know, feedback from kids, parents, the board, uh, our teachers, uh, you know, and then kind of go from there.
Other comments from? Okay, seeing none, I will close this um. Segment of the public comment and we'll move on to the board committee reports. First will be buildings, grounds, transportation, finance and safety. I know that Mr. Keys isn't here, so. That's something like.
I can, I can do it. Yeah, yep. So I mean. Just some of the things that we'll point out, um, if you look at our contracts, we have a long list. Of different things that we typically approve. Um, you know, at this time of the year, I already mentioned a few. With our, you know, our broker and then also for the auction. Um, some other things that are on there is we will be, last year we used um and our after-school tutoring program, which we'll be offering again this year. And we used Hey Tutor as our vendor, so we're renewing him as well. Um, Arbiter is. Uh, the group that we'll be utilizing for um our maintenance facility for requests when we, you know, things need to be fixed. The gallon does all of our well management for the middle school and the high schools, all of our water testing, all those different things. Uh, Masios, those are food delivery for our food services. Tools of the mine. Is something that we're required to do for pre-K. However, we use our pre-K funding money, so it's not coming out of our district budget. To pay for, and that's the curriculum that our teachers utilize with our preschool students. Um, I already mentioned about uh Ten X and Cushman. Magnolia is um some consulting that we had for our administrative retreat this summer with our administrative team. And then we have some other contracts for um shared time and full-time students with Hunter County Vocational School District or Polytech, as most folks know it. So we have students that attend their four-year academies from ninth grade to twelfth, and then we have students to go eleventh and twelfth grade. And we have to pay for that. So there's contracts. And then we also have some parent contracts for transportation. Um, you know, for our extended school year program and then for the upcoming school year. Um, some other things I'll just point out, um, as was mentioned before, there's actually a bill of sale on here. Um, for the items that we donated to West Amwell Township that they're going to utilize as we just heard about. The turf quote, which I've already talked about, and then the financing resolution, um, the acceptance of. So this was something that was important. If you remember, um, there was some concern during the summer that title funding was not going to be released. The good news is the title funding from the federal government has been released and we actually have gotten the money. So um, we now have the money and can utilize that in all the ways that we budgeted for when we developed our budget. So that was a good, good news. Um, joint transportation agreement with Del Val that we typically do to share transportation services. Um, there's a few change orders as we wrap up, you know, our projects. There was actually a zero-based change order for the elementary um project. Uh, that was hanging out there that we discovered as we begin to close it out. Um, there is uh some payment apps on here for um our school construction projects. A joint transportation agreement with Trenton and Newing as well for some of the students that we utilize. As far as our choice program and transportation that's provided.
So we do a motion and then we have discussion?
Correct.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve items A through S. Second.
Jennifer Bachler? Uh. Now we have discussion question. Oh, sorry.
Any questions?
Okay. I have a question, actually.
Hi Gina.
Then you go. Oh, I was going to ask about Masios, the contract with Masios. I, I. Recall, I. I don't remember how long ago, but there was conversation about, I guess, kind of looking at other. Food providers for our cafeterias. And I'm not suggesting that that be done right, right now with, you know, this on the agenda, but. I'm just curious if that's something that we can do um. Going forward into next year, I think. Generally speaking, there's some dissatisfaction with. With the food offerings in the cafeteria. Um, and I'd be interested to see what other options there are.
So that, I mean, obviously we have a contract for this year. If the board decided that they wanted to go out for an RFP, that's something we can discuss. For next year. Um, I will say that the last couple of times we've gone out, Masios has been the only one who's bid on it. But uh, you know, again, that's something we can discuss as a board as we get closer to the spring.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So if two people bid on a match, it's still cheaper. We have to take that one, right? So it doesn't, doesn't really matter.
Well, also if there's concerns about the quality of the food, what last time we talked to Masios, they, they.
Yeah.
Basically addressed the, the concerns that were brought to them at that time.
Yeah, I would recommend if there's concerns for folks to bring those forward. So I can address them with Masios.
Okay.
The state, because the state says that we can't give our kids good food. We've got to take the cheapest one. Another great thing to do.
Okay, any other questions?
Pamela, right? Ready now? It's Jennifer Bachler.
So I just, I wanted to, to just preface before voting on. All of the items um here that uh. I do want to acknowledge that turf product that you found is, is um, you know, less. Capable of producing the, the microplastics. It is still um a plastic product and. Um, I do acknowledge all of the, the benefits and we are going to have, you know, multiple teams being able to use the field, but I. You know, I know that when we were talking about the cost at. Last time with the, the original cost I had voted no to that. And so, you know, I'm going to be consistent and stick. With that, but I wanted, I did want to acknowledge that we had good conversations around it and there are. Lots of merits to it, um, but I'm just kind of acknowledging. The community concerns and the rural. Character of where we live and the, the concern about PFAS. And I know that I had, you know, talked a few times about that we've. We have done a lot of capital projects, but that's. I just wanted to preface that. By saying that doesn't mean that it's, there aren't many merits and that you, you have researched and, and found a unique product. Um, for the field and we, we did get a, a, a good um contract on it, a good, a good rate. Um, but just, I wanted to be consistent with. What I had, uh, what I had originally gone with when, when we first had the resolution. So I, I'm, I'm going to vote no on that one.
Okay. Um, Martha Dennis? Yes. Gina Bichetti?
Yes.
Uh, Brian Keen, Captain Kevin Gobleski?
Yes.
Aaron O'Leary, after Michael Shroud?
Yes.
Ronnie Tom Marino?
Yes.
All right, then we will move on to the personnel committee.
Gina, do you want to give an update on the personnel?
Yeah, I can. Just let me um open up my. Okay, so um, the personnel committee met on August twentieth. We met virtually. Um, it was a, a short meeting. Um. Um, and in that meeting, we uh discussed the resignations, appointments and other actions that you see on the agenda this evening. Um, there are no current openings in the district. Um. However, uh, Tony did share updated job descriptions for the Secretary for Director of Curriculum Assessment and Instruction and uh. An updated job description for the Counseling Secretary. That doesn't mean that new people are being hired for those positions. It's just updating what the job responsibilities are for those positions. Um, additionally, there is new teacher orientation on August nineteen through twenty-first. Uh, last week. And also um all teachers in service uh in the district. Are having an in-service uh day, are having in-service days from August twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth. In advance of the first day of school, which of course is September second. And that was it. So with that, I'd like to move um A and B on the agenda.
A and B.
One second. Any discussion?
I see that we have um uh Science Olympia.
Yes.
And I know I've been like keeping an eye on that with Mrs. Cubic um retiring, but I, and I, it just caught my eye. Um, I don't know if we, if you would, um. Uh, that it's not one of our STEM teachers who's on there. They're, they're not going to, are they going to be involved with Science Olympia? Still, or is it's Mrs. Bur- Miss Burkett?
Former GNT teacher.
What's that?
She was a former.
Oh, she's.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So has a passion for that area and as soon as Martha obviously announced. I think Shannon emailed us the next day saying.
Okay, good.
I want this, I want this, I want this.
I just wanted, yeah, good. No, I just, because I'm trying.
Yeah.
Envision Science Olympia without.
Yeah.
And I'm.
Well, now, we're still working through because Martha. Obviously not only ran Science Olympia, but we have the competition here and everything else. We're still going to work through that. Hopefully we can host it at the. New gym over there.
Yeah.
Um, as long as Shannon's taking that on, I don't know what the agreement was within the organization of. Someone else who'd been doing it. So I have to find that out, but we're more than welcome to continue to do that.
Right. Oh, that would be, yeah, we have to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to take a moment in looking at this printed out of how amazing we have for extracurricular activities. There is a lot out there for students this year and, and this is great.
Yep.
Martha Dennis? Yes. Gina Bichetti?
Yes.
Um. Kevin Gobleski?
Yes.
Michael Shroud?
Yes.
Um, Jennifer Bachler?
Yes.
And Ronnie Dobree?
Yes. Okay, curriculum and technology.
So uh curriculum and technology met on August thirteenth at six P M in um C one oh one. Actually. But yes, it was in the media center. We hadn't switched over yet. Um, we talked about technology and all of the updates that were going on. Um, typically August is used as a time that we start revamping all of the, reinvigorating all of the systems. Um, so. Um, we were getting ready to have on-course sync up with ClassLink and ParentSquare, which are two systems that we use. Um. Without getting too technical, it's nice that they all talk to each other now. Uh, in addition to that punch list, all of the, the actual physical items that were going into the middle school and St. John's were being installed at the time. We looked at uh some revamped curriculum for um French STEM, media, agriculture and um. A new English elective called analyzing award seasons. Uh, we did move forward with. The um French curriculum and this, the um Ag curriculum. So we will be moving that for um. For review by the full and board and approval tonight. Uh, we also talked about the GNT program in curriculum, as I mentioned earlier. We went over our assessment calendar, um, which was immediately uh thrown a curve ball the next day by the state. Um, so it, it will be further revised or it has been further revised and we will be getting a, a revision next month. Uh, the state, it will be administering two sets of NJSLA this year. Um, and um we'll be switching over to a new vendor, which we are uh especially thrilled about. We also went over um some communication on dual enrollment. Um. And then had a really great final piece, which was the National Education Equity Program. Uh, we did receive some communication about that. Um, it is a program that I, I'm happy. Even in our discussions amongst the board, um, we are getting a little more awareness of where students can actually zoom into college classes. From a classroom here within the school building um with a school district proctor in the room. And they can get college credit. Um, we did have students who excelled at this last year and the program did send us an acknowledgement of that. So um we will be giving some recognition to them. Uh, we, we referred it over to school and community and um. Will be giving some recognition on that a little bit later in the block. With that, I would like to move item A.
Okay. Any discussion?
Uh, Gina Bichetti?
Yes.
Uh, Kevin Gobleski?
Yes.
Uh, Michael Shroud?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachler?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
And Ronnie Dobree?
Yes.
Okay, policy.
Policy, we met on August sixth virtually. We have three items for first read, the first being the activity fee participation fee program. This is not mandatory. It was suggested by discussion at school and community and finance, recommendations to extend the current practice. Of applying the active, activity fee waiver from seventh and twelfth down to fifth through twelfth. Further, there will be a cross-reference between students receiving free and reduced lunch and the waiver will be applied automatically. Any payments received for these students will be returned. The second item is uh Regulation sixty-four seventy-one's school district travel procedures. Also not mandatory. These are updates that are being made to align the text of the regulation with our current practices, particularly the administration of the submission process. It's to ensure best practices are used. There was a review of approaches taken at three other districts, including kind of Central. These changes will not result in any increased cost to teachers and staff. This is really about just having a consistent documentation aligned to what we do, what we do today. The third item for first read is the student sun protection uh policy. That's policy fifty-three thirty-nine point zero one. This is mandatory. Uh, this is to encourage protection against harmful sun-related skin diseases by using protective measures. Uh, we did opt to uh. Go uh with the, we're not going to include optional language of requiring a written permission from the parent to carry or use sunscreen. We are going to include language that allows the principal or does need to control the use of certain sunscreens, aerosols or those with a strong sense. That may be problematic for other students and education will be provided on the appropriate time and manner to apply sunscreen. Which will not include using aerosol sunscreen on a crowded bus. Um, that we will direct our students in that regard. On second read, we have the honoring student achievement, sorry. Um, we have honoring student achievement. Uh. This is policy fifty-four forty. Uh, this is not mandatory. We did talk about this fairly extensively at our prior meetings. Um, this has to do with the change in the approach to the honor roll. It's going to start in eighth grade. And then we will have the two, the honor roll and the high honor roll. Uh, nothing to add here other than there will be communication included in the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six student handbook. And this is going to be covered at back to school night. And just an upcoming teaser, we will be talking in the call about our approach to AI. And there will be some discussion about changes in the regulations around our school choice program of the Department of Education to the significant rewrite. Uh, in the spring and we will be addressing that this fall.
And. And we've a motion to approve. Approve the first reading.
A and B.
A and B.
A and B.
Would you like to move?
I move.
Yes.
Okay.
Any discussion? Just as a reminder, anytime that we have a first read, there's a period of time between this meeting and our next meeting where any questions can be forwarded to to Martha for a discussion in the policy group. So, okay.
All right. So Kevin Kowalski?
Yes.
Michael Schraub?
Yes.
Jennifer Baffler?
Yes.
Um, Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Gina Bichetti?
Yes.
And Ronnie Dobree?
Yes. Okay, I will do the report for school and community. Um, one of the items that we talked about in school and community is um a new program called the uh Community Classroom Program. And that supports our uh community engagement goal that was on the strategic plan. That goal specifically was to establish and maintain a lasting collaborative relationship between the district and its community in order to enrich and engage learning experiences for both students and community members. So how, what that will look like is we'll be recruiting volunteers that bring different um expertise on very, various topics. Um, and they will talk, they'll be able to report to us, I, things that they would like to speak to students about. And then teachers will have access to um a database where they'll, they'll be able to invite experts into the classroom to support various uh lesson plans. We did want to note that it's important, this does not replace the mystery reader program or any of the other informal programs. This is just um in addition to that, to really um make use of all the great volunteers and all the great community members that we have that um bring a lot to our community so that our kids can learn from them. Uh, we talked about turf fundraising. So Del Val High School um raised funds for their turf installation. I think it was back in two thousand one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so we took a look at, at how they approached that and how that might work for us. Tony's going to go back to that and um present a draft back to the school and community uh committee for us to take a look at how we might look, how we might approach fundraising for the turf. Um, and that would be through tiered sponsorship, primarily looking to businesses uh to sponsor that. We also talked about the honoring, honoring student achievement policy revision. Um, as Martha mentioned, that'll be at a back-to-school night and Principal West will review that at his first meeting with the students. Um, and we'll look at that and how that correspondence also fits with a lot of other um changes that we've made that are really designed to support academic excellence of our students. That, so that includes homework policy, the gifted and talented program, um and the expansion of dual enrollment, just to name a few. Um, we talked about the academic excellence highlights. Um, not only did we have, we had five students who took the National Equity Lab um courses, including, um, there was an introduction to psychology from Wesleyan University and two of our students scored in the top ten. And then several students took the Essentials of Personal Finance at Wharton School of, of the University of Pennsylvania. And two of our students finished in the top twenty and one of our students finished in the top five. So obviously that's something to celebrate. Most of those students have graduated, but that, we, we celebrate our, our students and our alum. Um, so we're looking forward to seeing that. We also had six students who received scholarships through L A F. Um, and they participated in uh the Summer Scholarship Program. And they took courses at um the Main College of Pre-Art, Pre-Collge Summer Program, Rutgers Honors Engineering Experience Program, Penn State Ar- Architecture and Landscape Architecture Summer Camp, Outset Summer Medical Program at Columbia, Outset Summer Nursing Program at U N C Chapel Hill, and R V C C Precalculus One. So as you can see, those are pretty um fantastic offerings that our kids took advantage of. We're very grateful to L A F for supporting them. Um, but those are some things that we really need to um celebrate as much as possible. So we're, we're going to be putting together um news bites or social media, some things to really celebrate those kids. So, and that was it. And I have nothing to move. So we need to approve routine um items, the acceptance of the harassment, intimidation, and bullying, bullying report, which we did not have one over the summer. And then fire drills and safety drills, which we did have two.
Just that one.
So that, just that element. Um, so that's a voice vote. So, um, all in favor?
Excuse me, I'm Ronnie.
All right.
Oh. Sorry, I just have a, and so, um, there's lots, there hasn't been, this meeting or last meeting, and I'm not sure about June, but there's no enrollment information. It.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was my fault. I forgot to put her on there. I, I can add it.
Okay, thank you.
Do it, yep. I will take care of it.
Okay, thanks.
So back to the routine items vote, all in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that will um lead us to the second period of public comment. If anyone has any, um, they would like to address the board. Please come to the podium with the same practices as dated prior.
Any new online? Okay, seeing no questions, I will close that period of public comment. We do have reason to go into the executive session. Um, we've, when we return, we will be taking no um actions. Um, the folks are welcome to stay, but we will not, we won't be doing anything when we come back. So thank you very much.
Motion.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's right. We need a motion to, to move it to executive session.
Download.
Eddie thirty-seven.